Thank you Chair. We received a number of apologies, starting from Councillor Pambreni, who is starting in the Council Business. Councillor Chimo Se, he just said he couldn't come. Councillor Matel Kamaikui, as we proceed, Councillor Zengeni is not feeling well. Also from management, Mr. Nevande is on stage to leave. Mr. Shua is not feeling well and Mr. Yamal is also on stage to leave. Thank you Chair.
Maybe today, my apologies. I seem to see side management. There are some faces, not that they are not supposed to be here, but these are people that we are not familiar with. Unfortunately, I'm seeing them right on the faces. I thought they were replacing some people that you said are absent.
Okay, I know that's okay. We will let the elected attorney introduce them.
Thank you very much for the suggestion. Right, we have got new kids on the block, specifically who engineer it, right, who turn planning section. I think you are aware that we... Mr. Jandis is not with us, so we did some hard business and we engaged in planning the commission. And Mr...
Chimego.
Mr. Chimego. Right, Mr. Chimego is our new planning commissioner. Our repertory director, Mr. Itazina, initiate Mr. Chimega. Mr. Chimego makes our council, our council... The Councillor's... The EPC, the... Vice-Council Chair, he is owner of the country. Councillor Stolen. What, one? Our level of the Councillor, just going out, Councillor Chiza, what, four? Councillor Chigwe, what, eight? Councillor Yampera, what, three? Councillor... Manu... He is Yampera, what, three? Then, my Musaya, the Fedest Councillor Chair, well, that's what, one? I think management and the EPS. And... So, there's a... Then, Mr. Makoni, this is the same, I think we will follow. Mr. Makoni is our planner on contract. Right, I'm sure you are aware of the scenario regarding Mr. Konbanambe. So, we have got a plan on contract. Mr. Makoni meets our council representative. Then, the EPS, Madam Nabakwe, then...
I'm not sure if we don't know Mr. Poit, Chano Bosanga now, Mr. Poit.
Ah, no, that's okay.
You know him, ah, that's okay.
There was some aspect of our... You guys.
Dofungai Chingoli Polichekutse, it's the first time we are meeting. Sununguka, there's already Mr. Guamora, he is with us because he was there. He is probably trying to talk to Nakka. So, my family members, he is there, he is supposed to be 10. So, upon the apology, we are talking about what you are... Just for now, as we go on, Sanca Dofunga for today, Chair. That's all for the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Nabakwe. Thank you, Intersector, Mr. Guamora. I would want to welcome you guys, welcome to the family. We hope it's going to be a wonderful stay, enjoyable to both parties. Feel free, let's interact, let's work together, the family will serve. Welcome, and we are for all the councillors. Of course, it was not on the agenda, but I realize, I noticed that there were some faces that we are not quite familiar with. This is why I asked, it doesn't mean that you are not part of the family. Can you imagine? We proceed now to item point 1.3, which is confirmation and metas arising from the previous meetings. Maybe as a custom, we are not going to be going through page by page, but if in case there is somebody with something to contribute or something to note on the meetings, you can just raise your hand and draw attention to that particular section. We have all gone through the minutes, isn't it?
Yeah. We've gone through all the minutes. And I propose the correct record of the previous meetings.
We have Councillor Chigwe proposing. Anybody? Second, or second. Okay, we've got Councillor Chigwe. We move on to the communications by the Councillor Chair present for today. Atina, Jandina, Jandina, Jo, Jandiga, they are going to be communicating. In the... Councillor Chair present, Amam, Segozoma, Ida, Do, Urobo, Wacho, Anzo, Akambira, Magidini, Councillor Business. The Gaithe Goupie, Zambua, ten over item 2.0, which is committee reports for the month of May 2023. I recall Councillor Zengeni is not with us here. We wish him a speedy recovery. I understand he is not feeling well. We may regress to the rapid recovery that we all year before. I believe someone is going to stand in his place and present the housing, the old and environmental committee reports for the month of May 2023.
Thank you, Chair.
I am presenting housing and the old comments. There is a table there, HC01, 05, 23. It is recommended that the above session be approved. Then HC02, 05, 23, that 10 Lima Kombes request to have all the standard list agreement documents with the Observatory Council, Assistant Lima Kombes, initial TA Royal Castle, including standard number 10, 3, 7, 6, 5, 4, 10, 5, 0, 2, 5, 4, and 18, 18, 10, 11. We approve and that B. Please necessary change of the names. HC03, 05, 23, that Observatory Town intercutated solid waste management plan be adopted. HC04, 05, 23, standard number 23, 98, reverse deal, patient Cho Kara, recommended for signing. Then, there is a table there, the above list request be approved. Thank you, Ora Chief.
I will submit it to the House. Perhaps there are those who may want to contribute, maybe some clips. I will leave this time to the House on the housing recommendations. Questions? We don't seem to have anybody with a question or an invitation. Shall we then say we are moving on to the stage where maybe we have one, somebody proposing? Okay, Councillor Stolen is proposing. Councillor Chigwe, yeah?
I'm Mr. Gendry.
So, the Madam...
All right. I just want to take notes.
Okay.
So, Chair.
Okay.
I hope it has something better to cover.
Talk to Nakka. To who end up... The next committee, which is Work and Planning, item 2.2. Again, to go on to Councillor Mataga, we will come to Chigwe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My submission, recommendations from the Work and Planning. If you may tell us the page. Page, first page, recommendation, we are the only person on page 2. One, that means Mount Akachi Shah pay you the plan approved or fee. That means Mount Akachi Shah, it blindly approved. And that council permit Mr. Mount Akachi Shah to construct a new approved double story building within the CBT on the number A16 be approved. Number four, that means Mount Akachi Shah be given development conditions. 02, 05, 23, one. That means AM Gomba pay due to planning approved or fee. Two, that means AM Gomba, the building plan be approved. Three, that council permit Mr. Gomba to construct the new proposed warehouse, main building shop, extension and clearance on standard number 8, 8, K, and 3, 2, 1, AM, CBT. Four, that means AM Gomba be given development conditions. 03, 5, 23, that technical enterprises pay building plan approval, approved or fee. Two, that the new building plan, that the new building plan for technical enterprises be approved. Three, that council approve technical enterprises to reconstruct a new proposed three-story building within the CBT on standard number A19, A12, 19. Four, that new, uh, technical enterprise be given development conditions. Zero, four, 5, 23, one. That a 2 meter by 5 meters, 10 square meters shall be demarcated by local authority for... City Block's gas, that City Block gas shall pay a monthly rental to council for the use of that land in line with approved current budget. Three, that satisfactory planning, fire and health inspection report to be issued before operating business. Four, that City Block has to approve an operating certificate from AM and Zer. Five, that council reserves the right to withdraw the permit granted, especially in case if operation cause nuisance and disorder in the surrounding area. Six, that applicant be given development conditions. 05, 05, 23. That a 2 by 10 meters by 5 meters, 10 square meters shall be demarcated by the local authority for Enya Banga. That Enya Banga shall pay a monthly rental to council for the use of that land in line with the approved current budget. Three, that is satisfactory planning, fire and health inspection report to be issued before operating business. Four, that Enya Banga will approve an operating certificate from AM and Zer. Five, that council reserves the right to withdraw the permit granted, especially in case if operation causes nuisance and disorder in the surrounding area. Six, that applicant be given development conditions. 06, 05, 23, one. That a 2.5 meters by 2.5 meters, 6.25 square meters shall be demarcated by the local authority for 12, 19. That 12, 19, should pay a monthly rental to council for the use of that land in line with approved current budget. Three, that satisfactory planning, fire and health inspection report to be issued before operating business. That 12, 19, who have well an operating certificate for AM and Zer, that council reserves the right to withdraw the permit and especially in case if the operation cause nuisance and disorder in the surrounding area. Six, that applicant be given development conditions. 07, 05, 23. That Wasoka, Patricia Wasoka and Arjo Wasoka be given a chance of use, permit to change use of standard number 10, 6, 10, from residential institutional lodge in terms of section 10, 6, that the bridge of the regional town and country planning at chapter 19, 12. 11, 2. The Alice Wasoka, Patricia Wasoka and Arjo Wasoka pay the change of use fee in terms of the council's approved current budget. Three, that Alice Wasoka, Patricia Wasoka and Arjo Wasoka be given development conditions. 08, 05, 23, one. That specialization of Godfrey Mafranne, Mafula, Nekue. 10, 7, 7, the city system be approved. That layout plan be prepared and submitted for approval in terms of section 43 of regional, regional town and country planning at chapter 19, 12 to be, to the budget of special planning and development. Three, that Godfrey Mafranne, Nekue.
Mr. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. We received Godfrey Mafranne, he accused himself.
Okay, I was going to talk about it through the House, but I had allowed probably the Chairperson to go through there. But before, I was going to raise the issue, so you can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was my friend, Mafranne, Nekue. Prepare and submit building plan to the local authority for approval. That Godfrey Mafranne, Nekue, say the plan approved or fee as the council approved budget. This good friend is... 09, 05, 23, one. That council approve the change of reservation and subsequently preparation of the layout plan and also utilize the reservation to connect services in the area, the city area. Two, submit the change of reservation for approval to the leadership of the cabinet. Three, prepare, submit a layout plan for approval in terms of section 43 of regional town and country planning at chapter 19, 12 to the budget of special planning and development. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you for it and learning, Chair. Maybe is raised by Councillor Chiza. It's not the... In the interest of fairness, we normally cannot take a ticket, this is not the one who is engaging, accusing. Now, by term, a member, a serious part of council, but I believe the same appliance poses genuine interest. So, Mr. Mafranne, I'm going to ask you to accuse yourself from the House so that your matter can be debated. To talk to Nakka, to talk to Nakka. So, I don't know if he can argue with me. He is not going to argue with me.
All right, I will say. Thank you.
I have a question, Ora Chief, before you use. I am about to go to, cannot talk to the council. Such a minute, that is not my interest to want. Come on, accuse himself, himself. I don't know if he is applicable to both, according to the Act. Maybe very, it's very proper for him to say. I can't, I don't know. I need guidance, just while of the Act says.
I don't know, I don't know. But in the... You know my fellow councillors. I don't know. But they are going to argue with me. Because of my feelings, they are going to argue with me. You may be for, you may not be for, but the effect remains. They are going to balance. And they are going to talk to Nakka. And they are going to talk to Nakka. And they are going to talk to Nakka. But it's good for ethical reasons. One should accuse himself, I believe he is understood that.
No, I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. Then, that is the house. For, I want to present the Work and Planning. Mr. Mount, Pakaji Shah. Perhaps, but I feel that in your house, they also need to know the exact location. I mean, maybe you are going to talk to Nakka. I mean, maybe you are going to talk to Nakka, but I thought I should draw your attention. For, the zone of 50, you are going to check new, check new enterprises. I think perhaps it was 89A, or what, 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 I don't remember. So, maybe Chairman, you could perhaps share or enlighten the House. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I extend it to the planning department?
Right. Before I extend it to the planning department. Yes, that is the council. We are in agreement that you are the Chair of the Committee.
Yes, he is a member.
He is a member, okay. We remember, we are talking to Madam Erica Jones. I'm not saying that, but... I don't know. I don't confirm. It is a system of policy makers, that she knows the correct information on our fingertips. This is why it is been habit here, I was annoyed. Sorry, which is something that we were clearly told or educated on. It's not good. It's not good, because the chairman is reporting. But okay, for the day, but it's not good. Because there is no need, you may proceed. But I think this should come to an end, it should stop. You should have the information on your fingertips.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. And the EMI, Pakaji Shah, Nakson. What was it, CM? That was the head of the hall. Then, the techno, you are going to, behind the building, rest and chat. Then, Gomba, you are going to Henriques.
So, before you sit, there is a party, Naksons, opposite CM. Naksons, okay, Naksons.
Just go, just go.
Just go, all right. Here we are, ladies and gentlemen. You think...
Chairman, sorry. I don't know if the words and comments are for all the recommendations or any particular recommendation.
Okay. The Chairman has presented his report. So, we opened it. You are going to talk about the particular issues, but it doesn't mean that we are not respectful. It's not good to report.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. My submissions are on the ENG0.
What was supposed to happen? There's a party. It means management. Mama, if I don't go, I'll go to the paper. I'm going to make it in the house. Mama, I'm not going to do it. She didn't say anything. So, she said, "I'm going to relax."
Okay.
Eh, she didn't say anything.
That's okay, not it.
So, how does it go? You think it's not necessary? You can't be too busy. She said, "I'm going to come to the committee." Unless, by the way, it's not necessary. It's not necessary. But if it's not necessary, it's not a good respect to the committee. And it's... It's not a good respect to the committees. What do you think, but that's my... Counselor.
Yeah, just for interest, I think there's someone from the finance department. And earlier on, this issue had been talked about. And I would like to know how much he has paid for the state. Because I think, I believe some payments which have happened, which have happened in the past year or even up to now regarding this change, yet it was being in the report of the town secretary.
But, but, you know, you should discuss with the committee. Yes, that's not going to happen. That's it. Unless you're saying, "Mama, I propose to come to the committee." Point is, it's not necessary. It's not a realisation, it's not a mistake. So, if it's not necessary, you should discuss. Is the House acceptable to that? Or do you think it's okay? Can I do it?
Maybe Chairman Amianso, this person, I believe, I'm a Maria. Regarding this change. You all know this change. I created the civil campaign. I'm a Maria. And Jesus is council. Despite what is happening, we owe him something. As council.
The reason why I'm not cutting you. The reason why I'm saying this, this is a full council. Which is open to everybody. When I see you discuss with the committee. If you have, if you want to come to the committee. If you want to come to the committee, you can go and do it. You can't debate it. It's not necessary. It's not necessary. But if you get me, if you hear.
But, but, I'm not in the committee. This, this, this information, so that I make my decision. And, and, and I don't believe, you know, the committee, it's not necessary. Yeah, it's not necessary.
Okay, I will give the opportunity to you. But I wanted to put you in the loop. It's not necessary. It's a sensitive matter. If you want to know, you can tell me. I'm not going to tell you. I'm not going to tell you. Full council. You can tell, I'm not going to tell you. But if you insist, you can tell. Anyway, thank you. You know, you know what I'm doing.
Right, I think this also is a committee. We agreed that we turned down the recommendation from management. Or we take it back to management. So, if there's any other issues to be debated. If the House agrees. If one proposes one second, then we can proceed. If there's that recommendation, which is, which has been turned down by the committee, I don't foresee questions that I should answer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor.
Sorry, I'm not going to do it. But on the same note, I think we are in agreement. The committee, they're going to turn down. But, you know, I feel, maybe, next person, I'm going to tell you. And you know, another one, a council. They're going to investigate the project in the Spanish state. But you'd be even surprised, there were some payments in that period. And even when they turned down the matter to management, where did management do this? Where can you just make a decision, it's council, it's council. If you're going to compensate with another stand, you don't know. You're going to look for another stand, properly plan. Move forward, stand there. But if you don't, you can't resolve it. Next month, you're going to talk to the management.
Counselor, you don't want to open a Pandora box. You don't want to worry about it. If you want to, you can do it. You can do it. Okay, we're going to the House. It's not necessary. A lot of questions have been raised. So, we may want a council to know. It's not necessary. If I had a recommendation, in the investigation report, but these are things that you're not supposed to be debating. You can't do it. So, no, it's not necessary. What do you, what do you, what do you? I, I, I'm not going to entertain any further debate on this one. Don't think that, you know, bear in mind, it's not necessary. But, my issues are, you can even raise a motion.
I'm not going to respond. Chairman, don't make me respond. I have the most important thing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Right, I think it was a very topical subject. But I'm very excited. I think Madame Paco has said that the subject was already turned down to the committee. And like she said, I think it's noted and well accepted. On our part, on that, you know, statement, which is perhaps, which, you know, was only written. It was turned down. So, I think it's prudent to, I'm not sure, to stand by the recommendation from the committee. I think we are fully fledged in terms of the deliberations which were done in that particular day. All represented, the department represented. And my issues are, as I said, in terms of the political, the, I would say, already, perhaps. Before it was there, existing, these are the things, the statements were done. But the committee turned it down. So, I think my decision to stay with state. I don't know, Madame Paco, but there is option in the committee. It is referred to, then we proceed.
It's okay. I'm not going to, it's not necessary. But if it's not necessary, maybe more, more, you know, you raised another issue, you know. You know, maybe this is what you say, 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 council, you can't participate with your colleagues. You can't listen to them. You don't want to hear. You mean, make your colleagues aware. Yes, you know, put me to account, put the chairman to account. So, you need to, you need to, you need to. Ah, but, to the, to the, it's for the good of the people.
But, but Chairman, committee.
All right, allow him to finish.
Committee has no executive powers. And you know, committee has no executive powers. Whatever decision you want, the committee will go. You don't want to cancel. The council doesn't have any executive powers. We need to agree with Jesus as council. When the committee, committee, we're turning down the recommendation. This is a council, we're going to turn down the committee. Of course, we must respect the committee. And I'm respecting the committee. But who is that turned down the recommendation? You know, and I heard you, the chairman, but no. Let's not open the Pandora box and so forth. But now I feel, as council, must say something, must submit something. So, I'm going to, the, 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 was executive power in the council. Thank you.
Counselor.
All right, Counselor. You are right. Oh, you internet customer, you're going to Pandora. You're going to Pandora. I don't think it will. It's a civil campaign. And it's not necessary. Jesus, you can't get any more. Mary, the clothes, you're going to Pandora, you're going to, at the church. So, management, you know, as you know, you're going to. I'm going to change the standard. We don't, and I think it's wrong. As it's a procedure, you're going to change the standard. Was wrong. And it was implicated in the report here. So, it's true, management, it's, it's, the standard, you're going to. I think it's the standard. If the resident had the standard, you don't have to. Don't make any debate.
Okay, I would have wanted to say something, but then, you know. You know, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't. You didn't want to do it. You didn't want to do it. You know, you know. You know, you know. But if you want to, we raise my motions. For now, you know. You can't make the recommendations, Mama.
I propose, Richard. I propose.
You can propose, sorry. I'm not proposing.
I'm not proposing.
You can propose, you know. But you don't need to propose, because you're going to turn down.
Chairman, 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 I tend to be guided. The committee, I don't want the committee, but what the executive powers lies on the council. So, if there's no one, we can propose. Even I'm proposing, but no. Before I propose, right? To Jesus. I propose, you can't do it. You know, the management. Now, I feel, that's the management. But Jesus, we are the council.
Counselor, I understand, I don't want to manage. You don't want to, you don't want to. No, I don't want to, it was turned down if I had it properly. It was turned down.
It was, the reason why they turned down the recommendation. What was the reason?
Hey, Counselor, those are not necessary.
I understand, but.
So, that's the state, because they don't propose, but they, they, council. But Jesus, we are, we are, we are turning down this issue.
You don't want to, you don't want to.
Because, for it to be open to me. Because, it's, 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 you know. The money is, you know. Because, that's why, that's why, that's why. Then, by them, people, where, where, where is the plan? Then, before you, but, the, the, then, by then, but we cannot disclose. You can't, the, the, the. The fire, you know, you're going to Pandora. You know, the committee, you know, the management, it's a standard. But, you know, we are turning down, because you're going to, you're going to. I think it's, you know, you're going to. So, management, you know, another mandate, you want to have this standard. You think it's, you know, you're going to. You're going to.
So, you know, the council also turned down this recommendation. This recommendation, you know, the management, you know.
That's correct.
But you are now, you are now, you are now debating. Issue, you know.
Chairman, Chairman.
Counselor, I'm still speaking. I will give you the opportunity. We don't want to dwell much, you know. You know, you know. I remember last time, there was an issue, you want to, you want to. You want to turn down the committee. There are so many other issues, you know. This is not a unique case.
Chairman, Chairman.
Why, you know, it's not interesting. If you mean.
Chairman, Chairman.
I'm not going to allow you to be, to be talking. No, we are done. We are, we are done, Counselor. Rapera. We are done. I'm not going to allow anybody to debate on this one. Let's move on. That's, that's, we have to move on.
Who's proposing?
It's a proposal, you don't want to propose, you don't want to propose, Mama. Let's move on. You know, you know, you know, you know. Counselor, Counselor.
You know, you know. You don't want to talk about it. Committee, you don't want to talk. 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 Maybe you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk about management. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk about management. You don't want to talk about this. You don't want to discover. Because you don't want to talk. 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 Because you don't want to talk. 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 Information that you have. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk.
Thank you so much, Counselor. Counselor, you heard what I said.
It was a proposal of the recommendation. Except the one that I have been talking about. I'm proposing that recommendation.
But Counselor. Counselor. I'm chairing here. I have not asked anybody to propose to you. We are still debating. Do you want to?
Sorry, sorry, Chairman.
Because you don't want to talk about it. Because you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk.
I'm not proposing.
Counselor, you said.
I'm proposing.
You are proposing? You don't want to propose. Because you don't want to talk.
So you seconded.
You don't want to propose. Ah, yeah. So if you want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. Welcome, Counselor. Mataga. I'm sorry, I'm not going to talk. Because we want to talk about the committee. Because it's quite topical. I don't want to take a break there. Because you don't want to talk. Forget it, because finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm signing for the one. Okay. Left and right. Alan, we. We listed. We listed. We listed. In years, dollars. In the. We got assessment. We checked on the number basis. And we gave it starting from June 2020. That old elections. Compared to the. Sure, exactly. Take the first. And then that interest be charged on unpaid dues. The recommendation was taken down since the committee felt that council should first collect what it is owed by red pairs before penalizing. Zero two zero five three. That the request for a vehicle loan facility would be that be banked by the director of housing, Mr. Maurice Tewa. In terms of staff condition of service being accepted. Mr. Tewa to create his interest and reduce himself whilst the matter was being discussed. Zero three zero five twenty three. That the cost of X eight J N. By eight, generalians, grade fifteen, be offered to Maxwell School. From Lopatcha T. Chapera. Bosia Toca. Pitting. Robafazo. And just Florence. Jomdada. Linton. Mchiti. Morira. Takudwa. Peti. And Lali Chan. Zero four zero five twenty three. That the secure on special rate, a million for several subsystems allowing this for ZIT. ZITF twenty twenty three, the twenty five April twenty twenty three, be ratified. I think that's wrong, Mr. Chairman, I think.
I put it to the House for views and comments. Views and comments, sorry. Because you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. Counselor.
F C zero two zero five twenty twenty three. Another request for a vehicle loan facility to be banked. Maybe you don't want to finish. The committee. Facility. Administration. I have to be. I have to be. I have to face challenges. Because you have to be interested in this facility. And I would. The Javandar. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the State President. Will give some employees this facility. So it's only Mr. Tewa. The challenges we met are those of. I think. It's not very much.
Way to.
No, but it's a challenge. And it's a challenge for lawyers. To revisit the policy. Then I want to like, Mr. Tewa is a director. One. One of pool, one minister. As you want to be. Because you want to be. Loan is not allowed by the council. You don't want to talk. Isusu, you don't want to talk. Because you want to be. For three years. Three years, because you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. Don't think I don't want to talk.
Mr. Chairman. Counselor. You don't want to talk.
No, I'm not saying it's fine. Part you put in. It's so. You don't want to talk. Loan. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. Councilor, you don't want to talk. This is a bit expensive. It's a lot of tea and way. Way and tea. I don't want to say. You don't want to talk. So you don't want to talk. This is a bit expensive.
Counselor. Because you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I think as a council, we need to be very careful dealing with these issues. Because. I don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. Or give someone a loan. And this person. I don't want to talk. Fight. You don't want to talk for five years. I don't want to. I don't want to talk. For five years. You don't want to talk. At the same time. You don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. And you don't want to talk. So on the other hand. You don't want to talk. So we need to be very careful. Because you don't want to talk. We need to relook on the policy. Regarding the way it is. Because you don't want to talk. You don't want to write. Because you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. Because Isusu, you don't want to talk. And I believe. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. 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 Because you don't want to talk. So you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. Thank you.
You don't want to talk. Sorry. Forget it. You don't want to talk. 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 If you want to talk. You don't want to talk. But you don't want to talk about it. Because these are the two. The director, he is one. Because you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. After that, I like. I think it was a special meeting. Forget it. Because you don't want to talk. 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 So then. I think you don't want to talk. We sought to. Clear council. Even though. You don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. But you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. We discussed all those things. I remember. You don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. I don't know. Because you don't want to talk. But you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk.
You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. We don't use that. We don't want to talk about the committee. You may do family. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. But you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. But you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. As you don't want to talk. Because you don't want to talk.
On issue, Counselor. Because you don't want to talk. Is covered in the police. The current police. You don't want to talk about it. Within the three years. You don't want to talk. Which will help you to pay back to the bank. As in within those three years. Because you don't want to talk. What you want to talk. It's not second date. You don't want to talk. You don't want to talk. So within those three years. You don't want to talk. And now you want to talk. So you still come back to the drawing board and decide again. Do you want to let that person get another loan?